I call to order.
Thank you. I call to order the town council regular session, and the time is 5:31. And this is for the adoption of the preliminary budget. So, at this time, if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Hi.
Hi. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Donnelly.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Four members present, Councilwoman Hailey is absent.
Thank you. I just want to inform the public that Meg Hailey is in the hospital, so our thoughts to her and wishing her well wishes. Which brings us to new business 4A. This is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2013-14 Town Council preliminary budget. And I'm going to open the floor for discussion on the budget. Steve?
Just a few opening comments. The proposed Town Managers' Budget was submitted to you as of March 1st, and we've had four council sessions in review of that budget. I would ask the council to consider an adjustment to the Town Managers' Proposed 2013-14 General Fund whereby we would delete state aid incentive aid in the amount of $288,778 from the revenue statement, and we would increase unassigned fund balance forwarded to the 2013-14 year by $200,000. As the council will recall, we have, in prior years, carried up $1 million in each budget from fund balance as a means of paying down property tax needs. This year, we brought that down to $800,000 because we were picking up the $288,000 revenue, which had some concerns as to whether it would materialize. From where we were on March 1st to where we are today, we believe that there's less likelihood that that state aid for incentive program will in fact be fully funded, and as such, we would suggest that the full reduction be made in deleting the entire aid projection and increase in the unassigned fund balances forward. I would also recommend that the council consider the removal of the Cable-TV Interconnect Initiative of the $21,000 based on the discussions that occurred with council in review of that budget item. The net effect of those three adjustments would mean that we would be looking to increase the property tax levy by $67,778 over what was in the managers' proposed budget. That would mean that we would increase from $591,789 to a budget of $660,515 in new property tax dollars. It would still reflect a .99 or less than 1% increase in the tax levy requirements over the current year's tax levy. The overall increase works out to $68,726, and that's made up of the $67,778 plus a 1.4% factor for overlay considerations, which was worth $948. So, at this point, the revised Town Managers' Proposed Budget would be in the amount of We also sent out revaluation notices on Friday of last week. By using the new assessment values that were resident to the new tax role that was used, we would see a loss in taxable property of 4.78%. Today, we were advised that we may lose an additional $18 million in taxable property. Were that to occur, we would be in a position where we would have about a 5.19% reduction in taxable property or a loss of about $225,889. With council's permission, we will insert the revalue tax role into the council's budget so that the public will see what the estimated tax rate will be based on the revaluation adjustments. Essentially, we're looking at a property tax rate increase from the existing $14.50 to a range of $15.37 to $15.45 based on where the role is today. So, that's the range. When we look at the average residential family unit in South Kingston, the value had been $348,114 in the current year. Due to the revaluation effort, that will drop the average family home value to $328,908 or $19,206 in reduction, a 5.5% reduction in value for the average home. By using the new tax rate of $15.37 and the new value of $328,908 for the average home, the tax bill would be approximately $8.30 more than what the tax bill is at the $14.50 rate in the current year using the $348,114 average home. If it went up to $15.45, the increase would be approximately $30 over the current year tax requirements for the average single-family home or a .6% increase over current year. That's how the Town Managers' Revised Budget would be impacted based on the changes of the revaluation and the adjustments on the state aid and the CATV interconnect. I can answer any questions council will have based on where we are at this point. If there are adjustments that the council wishes to make in the managers' revised budget as presented, then it would be appropriate to address those issues at this time.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions here at the table? Steve, could you just tell me what the percentage of the increase would be with the $15.37, the $8.30? I'm sorry. Is it a 5.?
Let me, I'd have to go to that sheet. Hold on a sec.
I'm sorry.
It would be .0016.
.0016 with the new tax rate with the $8.30 more on the tax bill. Thank you.
And Steve?
When we look at it as a percentage, it would be 16 basis points, so it would be a .16.
.16, thank you.
If we had the reduction in the role with the $18 million, we would be at .6. So, you'd be increasing from 16 to 60.
Thank you.
And that would be $30.
That's correct.
The difference between $8.30 and $30.40, right?
Yes.
That would be the difference. And that's for a single-family home which is appraised at $328,908, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, it's a .630.40. And again, we're dealing in a snapshot in time where there will be adjustments because, as I've mentioned, the tax role, even though we've sent out the values, there are still adjustments that will be made particularly on the tangible properties and on farm, forest, and open space. So, with that, I can give you forecasting, which I have, but again, those are ranges that we're dealing with at this point, but it will be in that, somewhere in that $15.37 to $15.45 range. If we see increases, additional increases in motor vehicles, it may come down a bit. But I'm trying to be realistic as far as those estimates at this point, and that's all they are, are estimates.
Any other questions here at the table? Okay, I would just like to possibly open a dialogue with maybe a few additions, starting with Peacedale Neighborhood Revitalization. There was a request for an additional $1,000, and I think that the good work and all of the holiday festivities and the work that the Peacedale Neighborhood Revitalization has done, I'd like to try to increase that a little bit, up to 1,000, 1,000 more.
What's the current number?
1,000.
I certainly agree that they do good work. I don't know whether to jump at 500 or 1,000, but I could live with either, whatever the consensus is.
Okay. All right, let's just put.
Whatever the consensus is. I haven't.
Yeah, let's put it all on the table and then, because I have a few more, let's put it all on the table and then we can make some final decisions. Downtown Merchants Association, last year and this year, we have budgeted for 1,000, and I think that they have requested 4,500. Again, I'm not going by the book off the top of my memory, so I'd like to increase them maybe by another 1,000.
Yeah, I think they should do, I think we should give them another 1,000.
I concur. They do a lot of work downtown.
They're really doing those lights.
Really keep in touch with all the businesses. They've done their best with flowers and plantings and goodies, but really be in touch business to business. So, they've done a good job, and certainly $1,000 I can.
Ella, if I can correct one statement, they received $1,000 in the current year.
Right.
They've requested 4,000 for the 13-14 year, but they received only 1,000 in the current year.
Right. I thought that's what I said, but I could have been mistaken. They requested 4,500 this year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've always given them 1,000.
That's correct.
Right.
And Peacedale requested 2,000, so.
Right, they requested an additional 1,000, right, is how I worded it. So, and the Welcome House, they had requested an additional 2,000, and I think with all of the work that's been done over there and, you know, I think that they're really needing some finances, and I would hate to have this impact our community with, you know, possibly closing out some of our neediest population, so I would like to give them an additional 2,000 like they requested. And the Chamber of Commerce, there was talk about giving them, you know, I think that we usually give them 7,000. They had requested 12,000. I would like to see them get a little more, possibly another 1,000. And I would like to open up the dialogue of communication with the Chamber of Commerce and maybe have them, you know, send us either annual, monthly, or bimonthly some reports of how their mission statement supporting businesses so that we can stay in better communication with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm in agreement with the $21,000 and, did I hit them all? Oh, and then.
I'm sorry, you were saying 21,000?
Yeah, the $21,000 for the television. I think that unfortunately, we're in a position with budgeting this year, and, you know, I don't think that we have the $21,000. And with the $288,000 that we're projecting to receive less with state funding, I think that this calls for deleting that $21,000 for the live television from the budget.
Agreed.
And the last one is the Washington County Regional Planning Council. Last year, we gave them 3,000, and what is funded for larger towns is 6,000. And they have eight projects that they're focusing on, one of them being streetlights, second one being leadership development, which was that work with the Hasenfeld Institute. They're working on some informational technology to represent some of the towns, the affordable housing, which we're in support of. They're doing some work with regional services for revaluation assessments and regional services with regulatory reform and the beach erosion and economic development. So, I'd like to move them up a little, you know. My first would be to pay what the larger towns are paying, but I think that, again, in this financial budget, I think we probably can increase them maybe by 1,000.
Oh, I definitely think we can do that, and especially with you as president of the organization now, I think we'll get our money's worth.
Thank you.
Basically, this goes on the list. We had Welcome House 1,000.
No, 2,000.
2,000, Welcome House, okay, 2,000. We had Chamber up 1,000.
Yep.
We had Peacedale Revitalization up 1,000.
Yep.
Regional Planning up 1,000, and Downtown Merchants up 1,000.
Yep.
That was basically it.
So, that's 6,000.
Would anybody like to agree less, move those up? Jim?
Yes, Steve, any ramifications with the Welcome House issue, the board changes, executive director changes, some of the lending? Is there anything that's going to show up on our, or should show up on the radar screen here?
I'm not sure what their status is on funding at this point, Jim. I haven't been advised that there's anything large that's coming. Obviously, they've made some changes. They do have some operating expenses that exceeded what their revenue estimates were. So, they are working on those issues, but to what degree, I can't, I can't address.
Okay.
I know, Jim. I heard out in the community that they were interviewing for a new director, and they had some outstanding candidates, so I don't know where that's at right now.
I just didn't know if there was anything with the asset value or loans that were taken out. I just didn't know if there was any surprises there. I have no problem with the $2,000 more for the mission that they engaged in, but I just didn't know if we were going to see some emergency relief in a few months down the road, but I'm certainly happy with the 2,000.
Right.
Who are the next guys? I'm just trying to keep track after Welcome House. Did you hit the Chamber?
Chamber.
Right, the Chamber.
Revital.
Yep, Chamber, I'm good with 1,000 more.
Washington County Regional Planning, 1,000.
I can do at least 1,000. I don't mind going a little bit more.
I could go a little more on that, too.
Who are the other guys?
Stay with the 1,000.
These were.
Downtown Merchants.
Town Council has to happen in the 2014-15 school, yeah, budget year.
Well, I know. You were talking about the $21,000 potential bill for the video, and I think Steve gave us kind of a rundown that sharing with Nara Gansit, and we'd probably wind up at best guess a half to two-thirds of the time on live feed, screen TV at best, or?
I think the concern was that when we did have television coverage, the first and third weeks were controlled by the town and Nara Gansit, and the second and fourth weeks were controlled by South Kingston. So, if we were to again have the same services that Nara Gansit has, my assumption would be that if you had meetings on first or third weeks, they would not be available for televising if Nara Gansit had a similar meeting that they had wished to televise. We did work out with Nara Gansit that if, if it was the first week of the month and it was on a Wednesday night and they didn't have anything going, that we would use that slot. But if Monday is the date that you were looking at for meetings other than second and fourth, it would interfere and be in conflict with their normally scheduled council meetings. They also, I believe, televise on their school committee meetings as well, so I think that there's two nights on the month that they have. The other problem I think you would run into in South Kingston is that you would have to determine whether or not, if council was going to be televised, would you want the school department to do similar? And if they weren't at this specific location for those meetings, it would require a similar allocation of funds. So, instead of the 21, you'd probably be looking at at least $20,000 in the first year just for equipment costs and thereafter, $20,000 a year for the operational service costs, whether it was with Verizon or whether it was with Cox. I think it's also important to note that we, if we bought through one service, the coverage would be available to all homeowners, whether they had Cox or Verizon. It wouldn't be limited to one service base over the other.
Okay. So, I guess the council then is pretty much in agreement that no TV this year?
No TV this year.
We're on TV the next night, and you can stream us online.
Yeah, I know. Days from now.
Most everyone has a computer.
Or they can come down and sit in one of these comfortable seats.
That's right.
Gosh.
Good point, Paul.
And then we're only on 22 times a year, so it's $1,000 a time.
I mean, I keep remembering back to Town Charter Commission, and I know I was siding with them. They were trying to think of every way possible, like this budget session, how we double up on everything, how to get people engaged with us. Gets awfully lonely up here. Thanks, Dale.
So, do we want to take them one at a time, or are we?
No, I think we're, I think we're in agreement on those social service agencies.
Yeah.
And the Chamber, all of those six, what was it, five of them that we mentioned?
There were five.
Right. Municipal boards and outside agencies, right. Do you want me to capitalize on, you know, what the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce, you know, establishing to advance commercial, financial, industrial, and civic interest of the community and supports and enhances business community of Southern Rhode Island and creates opportunities for the growth and development of its member businesses? So, is it wise to say that if they could stay in communication with us to keep us abreast on the activity? I know Elizabeth Berman has reached out to me and said, you know, she wants to have more communication, so I think this would be a good way of doing that.
Well, I just don't want to tie their hands and force them to do something. I mean, that never makes for a good relationship, that we're attaching a, I just assume, give them the money. I think that they spend it wisely and.
Okay.
I'm not sure I want to make a condition. We've tried that before without success, haven't we, with?
Yeah, I guess I'm in agreement with Carol. I don't need a report card because I really feel it out there in the business community. If they weren't active and effective, I think we'd certainly hear about it, quite honestly.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know Elizabeth will, you know, she calls me frequently and says, you know, what more can I do, you know, is there a need? So, I know that that's going on anyways.
Yeah, I think they're staying in touch, and, you know, we can encourage it, but I don't think we should make it as a condition of the money.
Okay. I think it's going to happen anyways.
Yeah.
So, are we good for the additional 6,000? Does anybody want a little more for any, or are we good?
I'm good with that. I, certainly, Washington County, I was involved with that for about five or six years. I appreciate a lot of their efforts. It's going to, got a lot of work cut out for themselves now, especially with the shoreline where most of the communities are involved. But, I mean, I'm happy with 1,000, but I could certainly go 1,500, and I think, as Carol said, it's nice having the president of this council also being the president of that council.
Right. And if we go with 1,000 this year, I'm, just to warn everybody, I'll be back to get us up to what the larger towns are paying next year.
Well, when you report back after a year as being president.
That's right. That's right. Steve's going to find more money.
I guess that'll be your report card.
Yeah, report cards. That's what we want, is a report card.
I'm kidding you.
Just like at home, if you don't have the money, you can't.
I'll have to go take the razzing from that group that we're the only town that's not paying, paying the full large, but anyways.
We give back in many ways. Letting them have you, how about that? They've got you.
So, all right. So, Steve, the additional 6,000 in those areas, we're all set?
Yes, the 6,000 will cost you another $84 in overlay, so it'll take your levy increase to 666-599 or 1%.
I'm sorry, 666.
666.
599.
599.
We'll verify those numbers in the morning, and we'll give you in Thursday's package a copy of what has been sent to the state. But at this point, my, you know, my preliminary estimate is that the budget that you would have is a budget of $74,195,340 with the tax levy of $67,66,381. And we'll confirm those numbers first thing in the morning. You with me?
Yep.
So, the increase would be to the, in the levy would be 666,515, right?
599.
Why does the 99 come in?
Because you have to add the $84 for the increase.
Oh, okay. $84, is that what you said?
Plus you get 84, plus the 15 makes it to 599.
Okay. I guess I don't understand the overlay. What, I don't, the $84? I see the overlay here for 948. That's already added in, isn't it?
You've got an overlay, but when you increase what the tax levy is, an overlay is the amount that's necessary that you're not going to collect in the first, first 15 months of an active levy.
Okay.
So, then it comes in as a prior year tax. So, what you have to do is to look at what your normal collection rate would be. So, if you're collecting 98.6%, you need to have 1.4% available as a add-on so that you get the net amount of taxes collected in one year. Remember, the overlay is inclusive of three, four different components. One of the components is $340,000 that's associated with the elderly tax abatement program, erroneous attacks, erroneous taxes where we have to do the abatements that the council does on a council-to-council meeting basis of 120,000, and then 920,000 is the 1.4% of the overlay itself. That's how you get up to the $1,380,995. But once you increase the tax levy by the additional $6,000, you pick up another 1.4% on that 6,000 or $84 more.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, if I could just throw something out there, and I don't know if it's, obviously, it's still permissible for public hearing and when we adopt the final budget on April 29th, I believe. But if there is any, and this is for the town council, if there is any chance that we don't get reduced by the state budget by the $288,000, is it possible to go back and look at maybe a little more for the Downtown Merchants and Washington County Regional Planning Council? Would be amenable to that?
I would.
You have the ability right up through April 29th to be able to, actually through May 1st, to make adjustments. What you're adopting tonight is a preliminary Town Council budget, so it can either be raised or lowered, and any of the items, whether it's on the revenue side or on the expenditure side, can be adjusted.
Is that up to 25,000, and then you have the 25 to 250,000 or any dollar amount?
You have total authorization to make adjustments on your preliminary budget. The public has the right to request you to make specific changes with a number of signatures, but the council retains full rights to be able to adjust their budget until it becomes their final budget.
Until the final, okay.
And even after it's a final budget, the council has the legal ability to make adjustments. And even after it's a final budget, the council has the legal ability to make adjustments thereafter. It's not something I would suggest that we start doing, and we've never done before, but you have the ability to make adjustments. If there was some type of major problem with the budget, you'd be able to make those adjustments. I don't think you're going to see better information available on state aid by the time the end of April rolls around, because I don't think that budget will be finalized until mid-June at the earliest. But certainly if it does, it's open for council reconsideration. And hopefully we'll have a better idea as to what the role, role value is going to be on June 15th by then, too.
And the school department did say that they would know by sometime in April, did I not hear that the other night, that they'd be able to be a lot more, excuse me, exact on the, on their personnel reductions?
I don't think you'll see that, Jim. I would think what they were saying is that they would be using the student enrollment as of an April 15th date to calculate what the numbers would be for next year, but that'll be, those are numbers that then go to the state, and the state would be putting out the distribution. Most likely, they won't have those available in April.
But I know the superintendent did say she would know, like Latin, French, Italian, advanced classes, whether there can be two in there or 12. I, I know that was part of the conversation.
I thought you were talking on the state aid.
Or, oh, no, right, yeah, no, I was just talking-
Well, she may have greater clarity by the, by the, by the 29th as to what her program's going to look like, but as far as the aid numbers, I don't think there'll be any clearer.
I concur, okay.
I think she was talking about the high school students signing up for their classes next year. So I, I don't know what, they must do that sometime in spring. Do you know when they do that, Ella?
Is it around then?
They've just, the kids have just filled out their schedules, and they're collecting all the data now. They're still getting more schedules finalized, so it's happening as we speak.
Good.
Okay, so do we need a motion?
Yeah, I would recommend that the council, did you take a formal vote on the, on the six?
6,000, no, we didn't.
What I would suggest you do is that, that somebody present a motion to amend each of the stated accounts by the dollar amount that you're looking to increase, so-
Do you need the, the number in the budget, the line item number and all of that?
No, I think all you'd need to do is to give us the agency name-
Okay.
And the increase amount.
All right, I'll start. I move that we increase the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce, proposed, proposed amount from 7,000 to 8,000. Is that what you're looking for, Steve?
Correct.
I also move that we increase Peasdale Neighborhood Revitalization amount from 1,000 to 2,000. I move that we, we increase the amount that we're giving to Washington County Regional Planning from 3,000 to 4,000, and the amount that we give to Downtown Merchants Association increases from 1,000 to 2,000. Also, I move that we increase our contribution to the Welcome House of South County from 6,000 to 8,000, totaling $6,000, all five agencies.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 400. And do you want a motion on the, the total budget, or do you want to work those numbers in tomorrow?
I would also have you make a motion to reduce the line item for the television broadcast in the amount of $21,200, I'm sorry, $21,000, and the two adjustments, two other adjustments that were presented in the manager's revised budget, which includes the deletion of the state incentive aid in the amount of 288,778, and the increase of unassigned funds forwarded from 800,000 to $1 million.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 400. And did you want a motion on the final budget, $74,195,340, or do you want to wait on that?
The, the amount of the budget- would be $74,189,340.
Even with the 6,000, Steve?
Less the, plus the $6,000 would get us to $74,195,340.
190 or 195?
195, 340.
195, okay. So $74,195,340.
But you've already taken care of this incentive state aid. That's already out of this?
That would, that would be inclusive of all of the adjustments that you've voted on, Jim.
All right, all right.
So I move that we adopt the budget in a total amount of $74,195,340, as presented by the town manager.
Second.
Any discussion? Dale, did you want to say something?
To adopt as amended, right?
As amended, right. Thank you, Dale.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, 400. I just also want to state that in talking to Meg Healy today, she is in full support of this budget, and she wanted that be known, known tonight. So, any further business for the order? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank you.